Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on December 6, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. We do have a number of items on the agenda today. So if you would like to make public comment on the Ames Urban Fringe item, we're going to ask you to hold those comments until we get to that item number. And then we will provide two minutes for, for public comment on the Ames Urban Fringe. So if there's anyone who would like to make public comment about any other item on today's agenda, please step forward to the table or you can raise your hands on Zoom. Seeing no one, we will close public comment number one and move to agency reports. We have Central Iowa RSVP. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you could turn your mic on there. And then, yeah, and then it's just important that you speak directly into the mic. If you turn your head, it won't catch you.
Like that? Okay, all right. Well, good morning.
Morning.
Alyn. So I think you've got a copy of our annual report. So I kind of wanted to review that a little bit. Some of the highlights of the year, I kind of feel like 21, 22 was a year of recovery for us as we started to reengage volunteers back into service and post pandemic. Our volunteer hours did nearly double in 21, 22 from what they were in 2021. So we were kind of happy to see that start to recover. One of the things that we did was we did conduct a volunteer survey, not a satisfaction survey, but really a volunteer impact survey to determine the, the impact that, that basically volunteer opportunities and service had on our volunteers. So we had a pretty good response rate. And out of that, we found that 93% or over 93% reported that volunteering contributes in a positive way to their overall well-being, physical, emotional, social, and intellectual, which, you know, we kind of assumed, but it was really good to kind of get that feedback directly from the volunteers. In that particular survey, we also asked about the impact that COVID had on their ability to stay engaged. And we did learn that just under 40% of the volunteers who responded did continue to volunteer in some capacity during COVID. Some were new assignments because we'd never done mask making before that. So we had those kinds of things. Some were modified assignments. And then some assignments just continued, especially things like home delivered meals and, you know, food delivery. One thing I might have you take a look at is we had, we did start two new initiatives in 21, 22. And one is called Fraud Fighters. It's a partnership with the Iowa Insurance Division. So we have a team of volunteers that are trained to go out and conduct presentations to really pre-retirees and retiree groups on how to avoid being a victim of frauds and scams. And it's everything from insurance fraud to investment fraud to robo calls, email fraud. And so we really started kind of moving forward. We actually started that partnership in 2020, but it really didn't work out really well to have volunteers doing presentations then. So now as groups are starting to meet again, that's kind of ramped up. And we're actually continuing that in 22, 23. Kind of one of the nice benefits of doing that in addition to educating seniors about fraud is that the Iowa Insurance Division provides a stipend to RSVP for each presentation that's conducted. So if you look on the back where it shows under special grants and support, so that $850 from the Iowa Insurance Division is where that comes from. And so they have partnerships with several RSVPs across the state. And it's a good way for them to get that information out. And then our other new program, which we started right at the beginning of last fiscal year. So it's been going for about a year and a half now is a partnership with Heartland. And it's a grocery delivery service that we started. We, Heartland conducted a survey of their, of their consumers and we did of our transportation clients, determine if there are people out there that really were struggling to get groceries. And so we felt like the response was, was enough of a yes to that, that we should start doing this. So it started out kind of slow, of course, because we were just bringing people on board that needed the service. So we're doing this by referral. And so we were doing about, in the very beginning, about maybe four grocery deliveries a month. And now in October, we had 23 grocery deliveries. So it's really picked up and we've really started to identify more people, especially in the rural communities, I think, that really need to have that. But we are, you know, really kind of limiting that to people that either because of geographic limitations or because of physical limitations, they can't drive, they can't get to the store. So we're really kind of doing this by a referral only. But, but it's really picked up and it's been very rewarding. And, and our volunteers that are doing it are really enjoying being able to provide that service to people. So, so that's been kind of exciting. The rest of it, of course, our volunteer driver program has really picked back up again and, and actually, you know, doubled from the previous fiscal year. So we're just keeping, continuing to work on, on re-engaging volunteers. That's really our focus now. Because we're still not where we were at pre-pandemic. But that's really kind of what we're working on a lot this year is, is trying to get those volunteers back involved. So I guess that's it. I want to thank you very much for allowing me to come today and also for your support. We appreciate it very much. So, but I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
I have a question for you. The food delivery program, so.
The what?
I'm sorry. The food, the food delivery program, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Are, are folks then making their list like online? And so you guys just go pick it up?
Or?
Yeah. Or are you getting a list from the consumer to go who may not be as computer literate?
So it has to be through online ordering?
Okay.
So most of them, well, a lot of them are able to do that themselves. Or some of them actually have a family member, a friend that helps them place the orders online. But for those that don't have that and don't have access to technology, we have a fabulous volunteer that is, that will call them once a week. And, and Heartland Outreach staff help get them set up. So they have an account with the grocery stores. And then Jane calls them once a week. She has office hours from 10 to noon on Tuesdays. And she calls those individuals and actually works with them over the phone to get their order placed. So she will go online to their account and place the order. And then she lets us know when the delivery was scheduled. And then we require 48 hours. So then we get the volunteers to go pick the order up and deliver it. Yeah, we had to work through a lot of that stuff to first. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
I don't.
I don't have any questions either. I'm just glad to hear that the, your volunteer numbers are picking up, especially.
They are picking back up.
Yeah.
They are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Next, we have Summit Carbon Solutions Quarterly Update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to start off by thanking the board for allowing us to come in and give you guys an update this quarter. My name is Derek Montgomery, representing Summit Carbon Solutions. I have with me Bill Sullivan, a relationship manager that's been working with a lot of the employees here with the county as far as permitting, road use, things of that nature. And then we also have with us a project manager from Summit Carbon Solutions, Kylie Lang in the back. So thank you for having us. Want to give several things. I first want to kind of go over the project, what it is, the driver of the project, and then give you some updates of where we've been since the last time we came in. And then follow that off by identifying a couple of things that Summit is doing to go above and beyond what is required in, in regards to safety during construction of the pipeline. So to start off about the project, the project is going to be going around to 32 ethanol plants and collecting the CO2 from those ethanol plants. Here in Storont County, you have an eight inch pipeline that will be connecting to the ethanol plant just down the road. That carbon dioxide will be then transported to our chunk line, where it then will be taken to North Dakota, where there is a geological formation that makes it possible with a cap rock and some porous rock beneath that to drill and permanently sequester that carbon. So the, the next question is why? What are the drivers of this project? Well, the driver is very, very simple. The driver of the project is to protect and make the ethanol industry viable into generations to come. The reason for that is we have several states, as well as a Providence in Canada, that have entered what's called the low carbon fuel market. And in those states and in those areas, they require any fuel that's sold in their state to come from a carbon intensity score that is much lower than what current ethanol plants are operating at. Some plants have geological locations where they can sequester that on site. And that, that has been going on across the country. Here in Iowa and many of the regions, they do not have those geological formations that would make that possible. So in doing that, the low carbon fuel market is continuing to grow. All of the Providence of Canada currently have pending regulations that would put each of those providences into the low carbon fuel market. That's important because Canada is the number one importer of US ethanol. There are also several states throughout the United States that also have pending regulations. Iowa being one of those that could bring them into that low carbon fuel market. So as that continues to grow, the ethanol plants to stay viable have to find a way to get their carbon scores down. And, and again, the, the, the health of the ethanol plant affects the local economy, property prices, a, a number of things. So that's really the drivers of the project. Next is just some updates on where we're at today. Last time we were in here in August, we were at 18% acquisition in the county. We are now up to 36.86% miles acquired as of 11:30. So a big increase there. We have spent more than $1.6 million on voluntary easement payments to landowners in this county alone. For the state of Iowa, we have surpassed 58% of land acquisition required for the project in the state through voluntary easements and have spent over $106 million in the state of Iowa on easement payments to landowners so far. So, so great updates on where we're at there. Construction, we're still planning for construction at the end of summer of '23 and still hoping sometime around June of '23 to get an answer on our IUB permit. Some, some other things that, again, I think we've talked about and we've been in here before. Summit's looking for ways to invest in the community, to give back. Those are, those could be financial contributions. They also want to do volunteer work, especially in Story County. This is the county where their corporate headquarters is. Some of the things that we've done already is partnering with the United Way, Iowa Creek Clean Up. But again, we're looking for more things to do like that. So if you have those on the bottom of your handouts, you'll have some contact information for Kaylee Langrout, or you can reach out to Bill or myself, and we would be happy to do that as well. The last thing I want to point out is just a couple of the safety things. You've got some handouts here that go over. You have things that are positive articles from landowners that have talked about how their, their negotiations with Summit have gone. Some letters of support from ethanol plants and other leaders in the state. You also have a kind of a state infographic that goes over just what the project is and goes over some details. And that's the one I want to just highlight a couple of items with, and that's, that's over safety. On these projects, FEMSA, who regulates these projects, you know, requires that you x-ray 10% of wells in a project like this. Summit has committed to x-raying 100% of those wells. Also, another thing that I've seen Summit do that's a real commitment, showing that they're an agricultural company and not just a pipeline company, is they're warranting drainage tiles for life as they go through. And I know those are things that are very important to Iowa landowners. And I've not ever seen an infrastructure company do that, is provide a, a lifetime warranty on those. Those are the main things I wanted to talk about today, but we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
When did you have 18%?
When we were back here, 8/22? Yes.
This August. And 36% was as of when?
11:30. So last week.
I had Exhibit H from IUB, and I got that about a week ago. Do you think that's consistent with, is that consistent with 36%?
It is, but what I will tell you happens, so we'll take an easement. We then have seven days before we can actually pay for and file that easement. And so you have that time from when we sign it, you have that seven days. Then you have, we'll group those together to take those to the courthouse to file those. And then I believe it's every two weeks is when we're doing a new submission for the Exhibit Hs. So that is of 11:30. That may be a two-week, three-week lag behind. The numbers I'm giving you are as we sign them and as we take those in as a company.
So. I thought I heard a number a while back that you had 60%. I thought you would have 60% voluntary easements.
Now, in the state, we're very close to 60%. For the state of Iowa, we're at 50, we're just over 58%. So that, that may have been in reference to that. And then we do have some counties that are over 60%. So I don't know if there was a number that you may have heard associated with that.
When, when do you, so will you be continuing to revise Exhibit H? Is that?
Absolutely. As we're continuing to work with landowners and as they sign up. Again, I think what we're doing is every two weeks, we're making that submission to add those additional landowners that we've required voluntary easements from and remove those from Exhibit H.
You said you'd be warranting drainage tiles for life. I assume you mean any repairs that you make.
Correct. No, anywhere we cross a drainage tile, if there's any problem with that drainage tile moving forward, even if it's 30 years from now, that was affected by the construction of the pipeline, we will come back and we'll be on the hook for repairing this.
Good to hear. You'd be giving us some kind of written assurance of that then as drainage tiles are used.
Yes, absolutely.
I see about it. Okay. My other question would be. Do you have any other questions? Okay. Yeah, remind me, the carbon tax credit, who gets that?
The carbon tracks credit right now, it depends on how the, the deals will work with the ethanol plant. But Summit would be receiving the carbon tax credit. And then they are partnering with the ethanol plants to split. They get an additional, it's about a penny, a point for when they reduce their carbon intensity score. And so Summit is, is splitting that with the ethanol plants.
That's the $85 a ton.
Yeah, that's the separate. Now, that's the tax credit. Then the, the other driver to the project is the, in addition to these, these low carbon fuel markets, not allowing fuel there, they actually pay a premium for fuel that does fall in line with their carbon intensity scores.
But the tax credit goes to Summit?
Correct.
100%.
Again, that depends how the deals are structured with the ethanol plants. I don't know exactly how all of those are.
They may share. Okay. Just, I'm just always curious about that because that's a lot of, that's going to be a lot of money. Okay. Anything else?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration of minutes from November 29, 2022.
I move approval of the November 29, 2022 minutes as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
I move approval of the December 8, 2022 claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Pulling anything off consent agenda today?
No.
Okay.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
We have no public hearing items. Additional items, we have discussion and consideration of revised holiday policy, adding Juneteenth as county observed holiday. Morning, Alyssa. It's green. Okay. Sorry. Good morning, board. So on the agenda, we do have a revised policy on there and it adds Juneteenth. I know we had a discussion back, I'm trying to remember when it was, we added Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And now this is a continuation of that discussion. So I just want to bring it to the board and see if that is something we want to add to the 2023. It would be effective immediately. I think I put January 1st, but the holiday isn't until June, so.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
I will say that we are seeing more counties recognize this as a, as one of their paid holidays. So this would increase our holidays to 12.
And what are you seeing in other counties as the total number of holidays?
Average is probably 12. Some ha, also have some additional floating holidays.
The average is 12?
That's what I'm seeing. A lot of them have it between 11 and 12, your larger counties. Yeah. Well, I thank you for continuing to work on this and bringing this forward again. I appreciate it. So if approved, this would go out for seven day review like our, like we did last time. And then I would bring it back next Tuesday for final approval by the board. All right. I'm, I'm glad to see this on our agenda today.
I have too. I think it's my turn. Is that right?
Yep. Okay. I move approval of the revised holiday policy, adding Juneteenth as a county observed holiday and put it out for seven day review.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have consideration of proposal from Story County College Access Network for an investment of $20,000 for FY24. Good morning. And again, just make sure that you're speaking directly into the microphone for us. Thank you.
Good morning, Story County Board of Supervisors. My name is Jemet Colton. I'm the Story College Access Network Director. And I am here with Andy Fish of United Way of Story County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are here to request a $20,000 funding from this, from this county to bridge our federal budget of 24. And I will give you a little bit of an overview of what Story County College Access Network, Network is. We are, our vision is to provide awareness and coordination among existing resources, identify gaps, and develop solutions that will better prepare individuals for post-secondary educational opportunities and careers. That's in a nutshell what we do, but it's much more than that. We are a grant of Iowa College Aid, since this is our four-year. And over the last four years, we've been working in Story County doing exactly that, doing programming and working with other organizations on efforts to get kids thinking about their post-secondary education. And early is very important. So we're thinking middle school and up. And some of the events that we have hosts are, we have, we did Get a Job, Story County Fair at the mall, at Ames Mall. Last year, we had over 430 people participate. And it was, and we call it hashtag Get a Job. And it was for kids from 24, from 14 to 24. So the idea was a summer job. And we had, I think it's like 40 individual organizations that came out and engaged with our students and caregivers. It was, it was great and we're hosting it again. And this is not something that we do alone. We do it with partners from the community in Story County. And we provided you, and I'm happy to name some other organizations we'll partner with. But it, this is definitely a collective effort. And one of the things, so this is the first time that we have asked the board, the, the county for finance. The reason why that is, is then now our last, we're four years. So the grant is, is a four-year grant. And next year, we're on our own, but we are pursuing other efforts as well. So the board is not the only people they were asking for money. So that's that. And another thing that we're working on, we are hoping, and we're super excited about this, we're hoping to bring a Credo to Career Network to Story County. This is a big undertaking because we want to create that cohesive, early, like baby, baby, all the way to when you get your career. So it's the cohesive efforts as a community. It's not just the schools that are doing this effort. It's all of us as a community. That's a little bit on a nutshell where we are. I don't want, I know we've provided you with the proposal, so I want to address any questions that you might have.
One question I have is, what type of outreach do you do to the schools throughout the county?
You go.
Okay. So recently, what we have, we did, so we, so I call, I convene different organizations. So one of the efforts that I can share is we recently did a future-ready night. So what we did early, before the school year started, we sent an email to all seven school districts in Story County. And we said, we're a group of people that want to come to the school to uplift all, any, any align and uplift any, any alternatives, opportunities that you're doing. And we'll come to the school and bring the work and we'll just work with you. We're not here to tell you what you need to do. We're just here to support what you're already doing. So we have so far this semester hosted two events, one in Collins Maxwell and another one in Roland Story. So we, we are working and in making those connections, right? With this work, you have to build the connections, you have to build trust. And it is slow work and, and, and we had two years of pandemic. So it's, it's tricky, but we're getting there.
Thank you. And if I can, you also on both your action teams and, full disclosure, I'm on the, the leadership team. But, and on the leadership team, you have members from school districts. You have teachers, you're participating in the schools and, and supporting different programs within the school, not just after-school activities.
Absolutely. And then we get invited, we go, we, I recently attended a, the Ames School District did an English learners' parent night at the Ames Public Library. And I attended that. It's, we have to create community and create belonging in order for us to even get started to do these conversations. So it's, it's, it's good work. It, it goes slowly, but it's really, really important work.
I want to thank you for providing the budget information. So I'm going to ask you a few budget questions.
Yes, please.
Okay. Have you asked any other entities for bridge funding besides Story County? Or were you just going to ask?
Your man. Okay. So on that front, we are not only asking Story County. We have written proposals to the United Way of Story County. Craig cares and we're exploring other options with the Ames and Nevada Economic Development Commissions. Additionally, as of last week, Iowa College Aid has released a report of some, some funds to be available to year five, what are called local college access networks, which is what we are. Yeah.
Can I, can I clarify my question? I was asking specifically about the three-month bridge, bridge funding. And the way I read this, that you were asking United Way, Craig cares, and the Economic Development Commissions for ongoing funding. What, are you asking this Story County for ongoing funding? Or are you just asking them for 100% of your bridge funding? Because your full budget is $80,000, you're asking us for 20. So my assumption was you were asking Story County just for the bridge funding. You were asking the other places for ongoing, or is that not correct?
You are correct. That is, that is, that is the ask. So of the Story County Board, we're asking for the bridge funding. And then those other organizations are for additional ongoing funding.
Okay. Is this the kind, any, is there any reason this should on a long-term basis go through asset?
That could be something that we need, that we could explore. Absolutely. I am willing to find guidance, how, how to approach that process.
That was, and it just dawned on me that maybe this is something that should go for long-term, should go through asset. I think if we're just being asked to do the bridge funding, that's a new, when is the bridge funding needed? When, when are you out of money?
That'll be for fiscal year 24.
So July, next July 1?
That's correct.
But they couldn't apply or look at being a service entity for asset till the year after.
Cause they have to apply and go through the whole process.
Right. And they're going to be making their, they, other agencies had to have their budgets in by the end of September.
And so that would be for fiscal 25 that they could be considered for asset.
If they meet all the other criteria.
If they need all the other criteria and I'm not, you know, totally familiar with those. So.
Right. And the way that by now, so United Way, so Story County College Access Network is not actually an organization. United Way is the one, is our fiscal agent. So they apply for the grants. So every, all the money goes through United Way. And then gets funneled to me. I'm a contractor.
Mm hmm. So are you, are you a 501(c)(3) then?
Nope.
No. Okay. So that's, yeah, that would be an issue through asset.
Okay.
But United Way is also contributing $8,000 for bridge funding for the, the next fiscal year also. So it's not just, it's not just an ask of the county. United Way is also going to be contributing to fill that gap into the next year.
20 from the county and eight from United Way. Is there anybody else or would that be the total?
So one of the reasons, not the only reason, but one of the reasons what we want to join this Strive Together Network, the Cradle to Career, National Cradle to Career Network is because they fund in some way their networks. So they have, I think it's 70 networks nationally and they fund about 95% of them. And they fund them not fully necessarily, but in some capacity.
What would you, what are you going to be asking them for? What percent of your budget do you know?
So if we get accepted, so we have a meeting on December 19th to find out if we get accepted or not. We already submitted the application. If we get accepted, I would presume that we would ask for the a hundred percent. But we, in order to get accepted, we have to have a four years' worth of funding. They don't find you right away. It would be our second year with them, if that makes sense.
Calendar or fiscal year basis?
Fiscal year.
So they would want you to have a full, all of fiscal 24. Start next July 1?
I believe, I believe it's actually calendar year. From the, from the point of the application, um, you need to have 12 months of funding.
Okay. So it's 12 months. Let me just ask, how many months funding do you have currently?
When we submitted the application, we had 10, 10, 10 months.
And how much is that? Okay.
And so now a month has elapsed since our application. So we're at nine months of funding. And then with the, with this contribution.
So the three-month bridge gets you through calendar 24.
Yes.
Okay. Got it. So that and so if, yeah, I don't know. Okay. I don't understand the, you know, asset, whether that's even something to look at, but.
Not at this, it isn't at this time, but, but the important, the important piece is to keep the work that Scan has been doing, moving so that so that they can build those other community financial commitments and show the Strive Together Network that there really is community buy-in and commitment. And, and then hopefully Strive Together will, will pick up Scan.
So the first thing is the, whether you're accepted and that's December 19th. So a couple, a couple of weeks from now. But then when would you get into you'd be another year before you could get funding from them? Do they fund on a calendar or fiscal year or do you know?
Can you repeat that again? Sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand. Oh, you got it.
They're asking how, how does Scan, like how and when do they decide to fund? So.
Oh, how do they say? So that's what we're finding out on the December meeting. Yep. They'll, on that December meeting, they'll tell us what our application was, if we meet any of their requirements. They have a long list of requirements. And if we met them, if we do, we're accepted. If we don't, they will help us kind of guide us what is, what is that we're missing. But we won't know for sure, probably at that time, by December 19th.
And I'm just trying to see how their funding cycle fits. Then if they say 12 months and they're making decisions now, I assume that they would start funding if they funded at the beginning of January or calendar 25. And you have money to get to there. What's your plan B?
So luckily now, so when we started all of this, Iowa College Aid, it's a four-year grant. That's it. You don't have anything else. The good news is that now they open up an additional funding stream. It's an alternative. It's a 20,000 grant that we could apply for, for next, for FY24. So that's good news. And we did not know this um, two weeks ago. They just decided.
Okay. Thank you. Where does Strive get its money? Strive together. You know what their funding sources are?
So they have, um, first a, I believe it's $2,400 membership fee for all of their communities um, each year. So from their communities, they collect dues. Um, and then from my understanding, they have a pretty dedicated team of grant writers.
And it's federal funding. So they get a lot of federal funding and they stream it to the other networks. And like they, they do a lot of with big foundations, like the Gate Foundations and, and national foundations.
So from their communities, they get how much?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
2,400.
2,400. Okay.
But it's minimal. It's, it's really compared to what the, what you get from them, the training, the support. It, it's really minimum.
So is that a commitment that Ames or Story County would be making is fund, help funds strive together?
We, we, as I said, uh, yeah, we would, yes, we would say this is part of our budget. We are funding. There is another, there's one network, it's Strive Together Network in Iowa and is in Musketeen, Align Impact Musketeen. And, and it's part of their, their budget. The 2,400.
And this, this is, this ask is just to get through the next step.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying, I, I think long range.
I know. Mm hmm. No, good. Thank you. We need that.
Well, and to that point, I would say that, um, so Jemet mentioned Align Musketeen, AIM, which we included a presentation of theirs in uh, Appendix E of our packet. They were also a local college access network grant funded by the state. The they are the most successful of the LCANS um, in continuing past their year four of the college Iowa, or Iowa College Aid funding. And so that's kind of the model that we're following is that they have continued for, I believe, three fiscal years beyond their initial grant. Yeah. Beyond their initial grant because of joining this network.
So, so that's true. You've got somebody in the state who can help.
Yes, exactly.
That's good. Okay. That's all the questions I had.
I guess I have another question. So the meeting that you have on December 19th, and I know you're not sure because they haven't had the meeting yet. But uh, you kind of stated that if your application isn't correct, they will help you with that. Would that be then to apply the next year or would it be to submit a revised application? Are you? I, I guess I'm kind of going along with Supervisor Merkin is kind of your plan B. What, what happens if this is not approved? Or, you know, you don't get some of your other funds. What's, what's your next step?
Mm hmm. That's an excellent question. So um, I'm excited about that meeting. And the way that we've talked about is if we, let's say we have two things, that they have nine requirements. If we have two of them, that they're willing to work with you and get you there. If it's more than that, I would presume that that's come back to us next year sort of thing. And uh, so that's what we're, all the avenues. So that's what we're, um, we're definitely doing the Iowa College Aid Grant, just so we're not putting all of our eggs in one basket.
Thank you. Okay. I, I don't have any other questions, but as serving on the leadership team, I've personally seen really great work. Coming from, from the work that Scan is doing and the possibilities of the ripple effect of the positive impact of, of Scan are just limitless. So um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of put that pitch in there.
I would move, excuse me, I would move the Story County invest $20,000 for FY24 to um, Story County College Access Network as bridge funding. And that come out of fund balances.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the work you're doing.
Okay. Next we have discussion and consideration of Ames' proposed changes to the draft Urban Fringe. Do, would, would we, would, would it be okay to switch the first, the other two uh, resolutions in front?
Yep.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Shelley? If we move we skip item three for now and save that for after. Okay. So we're going to do consideration, a discussion and consideration of resolution.
Do Struthers.
Struthers 23 dash 40.
One S T. Oh. Yep. Okay. So this is a residential parcel subdivision. It is located just, well, not just, it's basically in the county line, um, east of Collins. Uh, there is an existing house. They just want to divide the house off. They just built it for their daughter. And the remaining agricultural land and natural areas will be protected in an outlot. They are not creating a second lot with this division. This is the plat. Um, it's surrounded by agricultural land. And it meets all of our standards for residential parcel subdivision. Um, so we're recommending approval. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
No.
I did have one question.
Sure.
Um, so that looked like there were lots of comments um, from Story County Planning and Development Department. Did all those get addressed and, and resolved?
Okay, they did.
Mm hmm.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Hey, I guess with that, I would motion to approve resolution 23 dash 40, the residential parcel subdivision plat. The Struthers subdivision is put forth in SUB 22 dash 00006.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Head and sigh. Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Next we have discussion and consideration of resolution 23 dash 41.
That's Hynan. Hynan, right? It's S T H.
Marcus can take this one.
Morning, board. Uh, another residential parcel subdivision for you this morning. This one is for the S T H subdivision. Um, the Hynan family owns this property.
Marcus, can you talk into the microphone, please? Thank you.
The Hynan family owns this property and they're looking to subdivide it. They just built a new house on it. And so then you'll see in the plat where they want to put another one in the future. So that property is right on the border of the city of Huxley limits and that uh, commercial area off of 560th there. So there's the um, proposed plat. There is an easement for access because there's an exists, existing access, but that's going to be on lot two. The existing house is on lot one. Now, they've provided all the necessary easements across the stream that goes across the south part of that parcel there. Normally we require a 60-foot easement on either side, but due to the size of that stream, they just pushed it out to a hundred feet. So there's additional easement there. Um, so the subdivision is within two miles of Huxley and Cambridge. They have not provided us with their comments back yet, the two cities. So we would not record this until after we have received their um, resolutions from their own city meetings.
And they have to approve it.
Yeah.
So we will not record it unless Huxley and Cambridge both approve this.
As far as surrounding land uses, um, to the north, west and south is all ag. Uses around this parcel on the east side is the, again, that commercial area that's within those settlements of the city of Huxley. Uh, it does meet all of the county requirements for residential parcel subdivision. And as far as comments, um, environmental health didn't have any concerns. All the wells and subjects are located on lot one. We had requested a couple of things that we received. And then also again, we're still waiting on the resolutions from the city of Huxley and the city of Cambridge of their approval. Milled out um, public meeting notices on November 21st. We haven't received any comments from the people that received those notices.
So if we, if we were to approve this today, we still have to wait for Huxley and Cambridge to approve.
Correct.
And if one of them doesn't approve, then the subdivision is not permitted. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
And this family cannot do the division that they would like to do with their property.
They, we would have to, we would then go back and work with the, whichever city were to deny it.
So what we've done in the past with Huxley, when they've denied these types of subdivision requests is worked to sometimes it's just easiest to have an outlot. And then the dwelling is on a smaller piece of land and that's, you know, helpful for loan purposes, but there can't be a second buildable lot. And the, and Huxley has approved those in the past when it's just a reduction in lot size, not the creation of a new lot. So we'll see if that's the case here. It might come back to you in that format.
But this division is for another
home.
For their daughter, right?
Right. But if the city of Huxley were to say, we're not okay with another dwelling being there, but you can still reduce the size so that the the financing for the house is easier, then we would work with the family to come back with there being a lot one and then out lot one with that area not being buildable for another dwelling. And with that, Story County Plan. Story County Planning and Development staff recommends option one, which is that the Story County Board of Supervisors approves resolution 2341. Residential parcel subdivision plot of the S D H subdivision as put forth in sub 22 00007.
My only other comment on this is typically we would wait to bring this to you until the cities have acted. But state law requires us to act within 60 days of receiving a completed application. We were getting close to that deadline.
Are they also under that 60 day notice?
Yes, they received the application after us.
Okay. And we don't really need anything in our motion regarding holding it until they're.
No, because you know, it's pretty clear in state law that this is not a complete subdivision without those resolutions.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
I would move the Story County Board of Supervisors approves resolution 23.41, the residential parcel subdivision plat, the S T H subdivision as put forth in SUB 22 00007? That am all, how about that?
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thanks Marcus.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move back to item three, discussion and consideration of city of Ames' proposed changes to the draft Ames Urban Fringe Plan and resolution 23 dash 47.
Okay, so this morning we've got two things before you. We sent a letter to Ames and Gilbert requesting changes be made to the fringe plan. Ames responded and has presented an updated fringe plan for your consideration. They accepted the majority of your requests. However, there are several larger changes that were not fully accepted. They proposed some alternatives to, and that will be the focus of the presentation this morning. I also wanted to point out that the current fringe plan expires on January 1st. Ames has one meeting this month, December 13th, and Gilbert's next meeting, I believe, is the 19th of December. So if we are to request a final extension of the current plan, it needs to happen today. I think that there's concern from Ames about further extensions as they're looking at their capital improvements plan and investing in infrastructure in some of these urban growth areas that aren't reflected in the current plan, that there could be annexation requests that wouldn't be able to go through with the current plan. I think if we accepted the changes today um, and showed that we were committed to moving forward, they'd probably be more willing to extend the current plan one more time. I don't know how successful it would be just to send a request to extend the plan without any word on how we're handling their requests for changes. So I just want to make that clear strategically, that if your priority is a plan extension, it'd be good to take action today on the changes as well. Questions so far? Um, and one final note, you're not approving a final plan today. This would also be directing staff to finalize a plan and then schedule public hearings, which each of the cooperators on that final document. Okay. So I, I wanted to summarize kind of what I think you all need to think about today. So there are benefits to the county in having the fringe plan. And the question before you is, do those benefits outweigh the limitations on conditional uses? The other question is, um, do we accept those proposed changes and, and request that the current plan be extended again, or do we let it expire? Back to the benefits of the fringe plan. You know, the main benefit to Ames, and they've clearly expressed this as they were considering our requested changes, is the limitations on conditional uses. That is something that the county currently has complete review authority over. Without a fringe plan, there wouldn't be limitations on those conditional uses. On the flip side of that, what we're getting out of the fringe plan is limitations on Ames and Gilbert's ability to annex certain areas as well as clear policies and flexibility for land divisions and clear areas that Ames and Gilbert are waiving their authority to review divisions of land in. So those are the benefits to us and those are the limits on our other two cooperators. Are there questions on those items with annexations? Again, without a fringe plan, there's no real limit from the county side on denying an annexation request. There's no real authority we have over those requests. We review them, but it's just comments that we provide. And then on land divisions, again, both cities would have full review authority over all divisions within two miles without a fringe plan. And we would need them to take action on every division request, including requests just to adjust parcel lines. You know, by an acre from your neighbor.
So.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go on annexation ability. Explain kind of how that would go.
Sure.
And what the authority is.
Yep.
That's your next slide.
Yep.
I didn't know that.
I try to be prepared. So with the proposed changes, the limitations on annexation would be limiting when annexation can occur in the urban reserve. The, the language we'd be working with is requiring some sort of concurrency with infrastructure and the planned development. And that would be preventing these kind of defensive annexations of just agricultural land when there's no real land to develop at any time in the future.
Okay, so let's go with that.
Yep.
Ames puts something out there, wants to annex some land. Who does that go to and who decides whether they have made that case?
Yep. So through the plan, we've clearly stated that all annexation requests needs to come to the county for review. Um, we'd have a consultation meeting and be able to ask questions. The, the supervisors and county staff.
Okay.
We all get invited to a consultation meeting. Um, and certainly if we believe that a cooperator has, um, broken the agreement or not followed a policy, then you can sue them under the terms of the 2080.
But we, but the county wouldn't have the authority either with or without a plan to say no.
No, but I don't think Ames would propose an annexation that was such a clear violation of that policy.
So let's say they did.
Yeah.
Then what's the next step in annexation?
The.
Development Board, right?
The Board of Supervisors takes action to officially support or not support a request. It gets forwarded to a city council. The city council then takes that in consideration in approving or denying an annexation request. Some annexation requests then go to the city development board if they're within two miles of another city or if they include non-consenting property owners. But if it's a fully consenting annexation that doesn't think, that's not within two miles of another city, then the city development board doesn't review it.
Okay, so let's say it goes to the city development board. Is the city development board in any way bound to uphold the urban fringe plan?
No.
Okay, thank you. So it's some, it's, it's more than we have without the fringe plan. But if people think it's a hard and fast, the county can just put their foot down and say no, statute doesn't allow that.
No, but I can, I, I think with, yeah, with the current plan, um, you know, the cooperators, we all follow the policies in the plan and have that mutual understanding. I think that's the key.
So let's say we don't have an urban fringe plan. Then what happens with annexation?
Depends on who you ask. Um, most cities don't send us annexation requests for review. Ames tends to.
Okay.
Because of the plan and because I think we have the same understanding of how that annexation, um, statute and state code reads.
So they would send us the plan.
And we could review it.
And we could say, no, we don't like it.
Yep.
And they could say, well, there's no urban fringe plan.
Yeah.
There's no 28E, right?
Yep.
So the difference is that if there's a 28E, Ames has agreed to something and we hope they would uphold their part of that. And if we felt strongly enough about it and thought we had a case, they didn't, we could sue.
Right.
Which is more than if we don't have an urban fringe plan.
Yep.
See, that's.
It gives us legal standing.
But if Ames wants to annex, they meet the legal standards even that we have an urban fringe plan. But we don't want them to, let's say, it's an area we don't want them to. Does Ames then just say, too bad, we're still doing it?
No, I would anticipate we would need to go through an amendment process where the county would need to agree to change the designation of a property prior to that annexation request being heard to, to change it to a designation that allows annexation. And that's what we do now, you know, even for, for instance, the Caramolee annexation. That was, I think it was last year, it just wasn't in the right land use designation to allow annexation. And even though in the 2040 plan, it showed it would be an urban growth area. We went through a pretty lengthy amendment process where both Ames and Story County had to approve that amendment. So it does bind us to that. And that would give us a clear denial ability as well. So for ag farm service. Yeah. So for ag farm service.
Difference in an agreement about we won't annex.
Say that again.
What you used in the Caramolee example was the plan did not allow it. It was not the right zoning or it was not in, in the urban fringe plan. That's, is that different than Ames agreeing not to annex? In the plan, agreement in the plan not to annex.
No, it's the same. So for instance, in the ag farm service designation, rural residential expansion. The plan states no annexation is permitted. So annexation of those areas requires an amendment to the plan first.
But if you have an area that could be annexed or you don't want to have annexed, but is in the urban reserve overlay, then they could still annex. It doesn't have to go through an amendment process. Is that correct?
That's the difference between those designations, yeah. Um, the other annexation policy that Ames proposed, um, with their changes is that they wouldn't entertain any involuntary annexations of the urban reserve. Which is different than non-consenting 80/20 annexations. It's, it's when, um, you know, so there's, there's voluntary annexations that can include up to 20% of the land areas, non-consenting property owners. That's not an involuntary annexation.
Right, right.
So just to be clear.
Appreciate that they put that in there. Really doesn't.
They don't really do them.
I, I think there've been a few in the past, but not many in the past 10 years.
Who approves an involuntary annexation?
Can you say that again?
Moves an involuntary.
That would go through public hearings with the Board of Supervisors and City Development Board.
So it would end up with the city development board? Okay.
Yep. Land divisions. I have just some basic information on what, what benefits, what flexibility the plan provides versus having no plan here. Again, we've worked with the cooperators to allow reductions in lot sizes of 35 acre parcels, which makes it easier to get a loan and build a house. Without a plan, you know, I, I just took language from the Ames 2040 plan because that's what Ames will use to review these types of division requests. Land divisions permissible for splitting off existing home or farmstead from farm area, but the minimum lot size is 35 acres. So I, I really don't know if that would be permitted or not. I don't, I don't think it would be if it wasn't a farmstead or an existing home. And then divisions for the creation of new lots, that would clearly not be allowed if we didn't have a plan. It's not allowed with a plan and ag farm service or urban reserve either. Creation of additional lots in rural residential areas. So this is, you know, creating additional lots. After you've gone through an amendment process to do like a rural subdivision. We've got clear standards in the plan that are locational standards, minimum levels of service standards. Without a plan, Ames would have the ability to review all of those um, and require that their infrastructure standards be met or deny those. Are there questions on land divisions and what we're getting? Okay.
I guess, sorry.
That's okay.
Think about it. So in the creation of new development areas, the, the last one there. So you're saying under no plan that only the city would have the ability to review? Is that, is that how I'm real?
No, we would both, but it'd be, you know, like the last subdivision you just had on your agenda this morning. If, if Ames chooses to deny a subdivision, then it's, then it's denied even if we approved it, right?
Okay. But then you would work with them to figure out what their, potentially, I mean, that's what you just said in the last one.
Yeah. Yeah, it, we might be able to work with them to do just a reduced lot size where the remainder's an outlot. But again, that would need to go through Ames as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just wanting to make sure that it's consistent of what.
Sure. So these are the changes that Ames did accept that you requested. They added a policy basically that we would review annexation requests. Those would be routed to us. That our review would include if we've got inventories or other management recommendations for environmentally sensitive areas, they'd like, they'd like to have those as part of annexation requests. They are agreeing to kind of clarify that language in the urban reserve about when annexation is allowed. So weighing the viability of how their urban growth areas are developing and the availability of infrastructure. They did agree to allow the same reductions in lot sizes that we had provided for in the ag farm service designation, in the urban reserve designation. So if you've got a 35 acre parcel that's buildable, meets our lease exception or a different exception under our code, that, that lot could be reduced in size to make it easier to get a loan to build a house. They did agree to that in the urban reserve.
But they, but you wouldn't be able, it wouldn't be a new buildable lot.
No. No.
So I think that's one of the things that I'm sorry to interrupt you as you're walking through this, but that's one of the things that keeps tripping me up is that someone has a lot and they want to divide it because they want to build a house for their parent or their daughter or child. I only have daughters, so, um, they can't. With this plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't be able to without it either.
They wouldn't be able to without it?
No, not if it, no. It's not provided for Ames Plan 2040 and that, those.
Right, okay. So in the, in the fringe area.
Yeah.
Regardless of any plan, Ames does not allow that, for that to happen?
No.
Okay.
There's some allowances for, you know, rural subdivisions, like Cameron State style development in areas they're clearly not going to grow into. But I think especially in the urban reserve, that no, there would not be an allowance to create an additional lot without a, without the fringe plan. That, no, there would not be an allowance to create an additional lot without a, without the fringe plan.
Okay, I'm a little confused right there from what you just said. I, maybe just my word. So they cannot. They could not have another buildable home on a lot with or without the fringe plan?
No, in the urban reserve, no. That's, you know, I, I did reach out to city staff to confirm that a while ago, but. No, there's clear policies in the urban reserve that. In their twenty forty plan that they wouldn't. I think they'd follow those and they wouldn't support that.
So if there was not a fringe plan. What is the process if a landowner? Wants to build another home?
Yep, they'd come to us and Ames to approve that subdivision.
And just one of them would have to say no?
Yeah. And they might need to go to Gilbert too. If it's within ten miles of Gilbert.
But with the fringe plan, they would just come to us?
They could reduce it in size.
But then they still can't build?
Right.
Right. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what, what we gained on that.
Some, some flexibility. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Yeah, either you'd get some flexibility for landowners. I mean, it's not a lot, but it, it's something. And we do have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that will be going to Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue.
That's okay. Um. They did remove the limit on. The amount of land that can be requested to be amended for rural residential subdivision. Then they did remove the restriction on the number of times per year. Um, that an amendment could be heard. So if somebody wanted to request an amendment to rural residential expansion for a new subdivision or even, you know, to get that second house, go through that process. Um, there wouldn't be a limit on the number of those that could happen.
So that could just be happening all the time?
Mm hmm.
That could make a pretty significant work.
Yeah, a- and that was, um, something that you all requested in your letter.
Okay.
I think there was concern about. From the development community and, and from members of the public about how restrictive that was. Um, they did clarify the process for mapping the rural residential expansion area in the urban reserve overlay. Um, and they did re-agree that the parcels that were inadvertently included south of two sixtieth needed to be removed. They did also ask, um. Or suggest that an agreement just with Gilbert over an annexation limit. Was discussed. And then there was that involuntary annexation policy they also proposed that we kind of have already talked about. Questions on the changes that were accepted?
Um, could you go back, back one slide? So the first one, and maybe it's just how I'm reading it. So the county considering a policy that the county is not agreeing to support the annexation of urban growth or urban reserve overlay areas through the adoption of the plan. Something about how that's written is confusing me.
Yes, I, um, I agree. Um, we. Are saying that annexation may be entertained in those areas with the adoption of the plan. And this is just. I think it came from Planning and Zoning Commission, that concern that with the adoption of the plan, we were just rubber stamping all annexation requests that came through in those areas. So it's just clarifying that we still need to review. And, and do that resolution supporting or not supporting.
Could you go forward a slide again? The first bullet there, establishing the one eightieth is agreed upon annexation for the city of Ames and Gilbert. Um, what we proposed was no annexation at all in the urban reserve. And to the north of Ames, the urban reserve began at one ninetieth.
Mm hmm.
We knew that Gilbert had an issue and a concern that there'd be some kind of community separator or an area that neither Gilbert nor Ames would annex. But we didn't put it in that letter because.
We did.
Pardon?
We did.
We did put it in that letter?
You had me at it.
Where? I missed this morning. I looked through too many documents.
Um. It's in two places.
Let's see. Uh, bullet point number seven on page three.
Yep. And then it's also, um.
No, that's, no, if, no, that's north of one seventieth. We're talking about between one seventieth and one ninetieth.
Yep, so it's bullet point three on page two. Specifically, current concerns were raised about the urban reserve overlay applied to the area between Ames and Gilbert and southwest of Ames.
Wait, where are you? I'm sorry, where are you?
Page two. Third bullet point.
On, under, based on these issues, the county proposes.
Mm hmm. And no, um, above that. And then also under, based on these issues, the county.
Identified.
Hold on, yeah.
Okay.
Based on these issues, the county proposes the following changes. The second bullet point, we say supplant the annexation policies with a policy. That no annexations permitted in the urban reserve. And then in italics under that. This is in response to the comments regarding the area between Ames and Gilbert. And southwest of Ames.
I'm not finding where you were reading. This is in response to. Do I have an older version?
You can have mine. Cause I, I believe, um, if you had the one that was first on your agenda, that wasn't in there. And then when we brought it back the second time on the twenty fifth, you had, you had me at it.
That's the letter of the twentieth, okay. Okay. Thank you. I was wondering.
No problem.
I was wondering why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, no, that was in there for sure.
Was I, okay. I pulled the wrong letter. So. We. Requested that with Gilbert. With Gilbert noted.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Why don't I just go forward?
With taking out the, okay, with taking out. So they've done something different. Gilbert has since written a letter to the Ames Council and said. What we want is that we want there to be. Gilbert will not annex below one eightieth, Ames will not annex above one ninetieth.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Um, so.
Ames is not going to consider that until next Tuesday.
Yes, and you know, it's.
We don't need to worry though about what Ames, whether Ames might entertain it or, or not. We don't need to worry about that.
No, and I think next Tuesday is just direction. On. What to do with the letter. I think that's their process. They get a correspondence, then the city council directs staff what to do with it.
I have some concern when. The city hasn't specifically looked at Gilbert's, at Gilbert's. Requests there. Of us making some final decision on that issue today. I feel like we, it's almost like we're as one of the cooperators, closing the door on that. And I don't want to close the door on that. And they're considering what Gilbert is requesting.
I completely understand. Um, I think the only trade off would be. You know, will taking action today? Help us get one more renewal of the current plan?
Well, we don't have to take action on everything today. We could.
We could.
Some of it.
We could just take action to extend it, but you know, without a clear direction on what we're going to do in that timeframe. I don't know how that will be taken is all. And it's up, it's up to you. I just want to present all potential outcomes. Do you want me to get, start off just with the, um, urban reserve issue then? I can come back to conditional uses if we're kind of already talking about that.
It's, I'm sorry, say that again.
But let's, do you want to just keep discussing that? I've got a few slides to show you on that.
Yeah.
I think it would just make sense. Okay. Okay, so this was your request again. We requested no annexation in the urban reserve. We specifically called out southwest Ames and between Ames and Gilbert. Ames did not support those requests in full. They did remove some areas that I've got some maps I prepared. They're not exact. We'll need to work through the details, but they're my understanding. Um, so we, staff would recommend that those are accepted. I, I understand the hesitancy with Gilbert's letter though.
Right.
Um, so this is what Ames prepared, just so we're all on the same page. And so based on this drawing, here's what I did. So this is proposed to be removed from the urban reserve. It is west of the railroad tracks. And then south of one ninetieth, west of GW Carver.
To right across from the irons, the undeveloped land in that northeast corner.
Yes. Okay. This is the area they've proposed to remove from the urban reserve south of Worley Creek. Um, I did cut it short on the Iowa State land there next to the Ferguson property. That's that little triangle. But it might include the whole thing. We'd need to work that out. I just couldn't tell from the drawing.
And why is, why is Meadow Glen? An urban growth?
That was the other part of our request. Um, we requested that it be made urban reserve. If the urban reserve wasn't to be annexable, Ames came back and said that there's utilities there with capacity to serve it. If it were to develop, it doesn't make sense to map it as something. That can't be annexed that might allow, you know, rural residential development. And so that was the Champlin Farms property. There's other areas, you know, with western growth, north of Worley Creek that, you know. Could lead to Meadow Glen becoming an island of land. Or effectively an island, even if there was a strip left. And that's why it, it, it needs to be able to be annexed.
Didn't we talk at our last meeting a little bit like a, like a berm or something that could be put there to have some separation so that it wouldn't? Wouldn't have an island out there so that area couldn't be.
I think it's been a corridor.
Or corridor, yeah, whatever.
I think that's come up, um. You know, we're running into issues now. Where that's been done in the past and the further you go out, the further that line has to be extended at, at some point. For, for city growth to occur, it's, parcels just have to come in. To meet state law. But you're right. I mean, just the Champlin Farms annexation isn't enough land to bring in Meadow Glen. It'd have to be a bigger proposal. Um, but we don't just want to get crosswise with state law. And I, I get what you're saying. Um, but it's still, even if there's a strip, it's still effectively. An island.
But there's no plan to develop it right now. So we could make the argument that it could just not be urban reserve. Urban growth, I'm sorry. For now. If we could just continue to make that argument.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're open to further negotiations.
I mean, that's okay. I mean, that's okay. It's okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. It's okay if they're not open.
Yeah, but you could, you could request that again. Cause we already did request it.
Mm hmm.
Um. And that the result was Meadow Glen getting matched as rural residential existing instead. But still allowing annexation. If it had to be.
So let's say it, we, it's not, we, they agree not to map it as urban growth. Okay. And to five years from now, somebody wants to develop or some, something comes up where. We need to have this conversation again. Then we discuss an amendment to the fringe plan.
At that.
All the cooperators. Would have to agree to amend the fringe plan. So it just means a little. More work specific to that.
Mm hmm.
Later, instead of just doing all the work right now that we don't even know we need to do.
Mm hmm.
Right?
Have an extra copy of our September twenty fifth letter on you.
October twenty fifth? September twentieth? I do.
Make it if you just give it to me. Cause it's a, the one you have is September twenty fifth.
October twenty fifth. Um, was a city council memo. And then September twentieth was the date of the letter.
The September twentieth letter that's on our agenda is not the same September twentieth letter you have.
I, I have, the one I just gave you is the one that was finally approved and signed by, by Chair.
This.
Vaisal. Yes. That's the final version. It was what was on your agenda.
And this is the one, it's the same one. Oh, I.
No, it's not.
It is, I think it is. I, I think what I have is, that is with Kelly's edits. So I think, I think the format changed a little bit because. It was, he was trying to respond directly to each point. So he created bullets that weren't there before.
Yes. So this is the, this is, this is your letter, what I just gave you. So again, on these areas that were urban reserve that we requested to not be annexable. You know, if there wasn't a fringe plan, which is, was probably where we're headed, or a fringe plan that didn't address annexation at all. Um, then those areas could be annexed because they're, they're shown in the twenty forty plan that way. There, there's still priorities for the city of Ames. Um. We've kind of already gone over this, but in addition to the reductions, we do have new policies on. Um, or clarified policies on one annexation in the urban reserve is appropriate. Um. I did just want to note that. By removing the urban reserve west of GW Carver, it does set that up, that area up for rural residential subdivisions pretty well. So just something that you're aware of. It, it will meet the standards to be amended to rural residential expansion. Um, and, and here's just where I try to address that, that issue with the Gilbert letter. So again, Gilbert did send a letter on the twenty ninth to Ames in Story County. Stating that they wanted to limit themselves to one eightieth, not annexing past one eighth and wanted Ames to limit itself not to annex past one ninetieth. Um, while that correspondence will be forwarded to city council, we don't know what they'll do with it at this point. Um. You could wait and to act until the council's taken some action on that. I just want to be clear and in my experience with our changes, bringing those to Ames, you know, it's pretty clear to me at this point. Um, the council doesn't want to dedicate more of their staff time to back and forth negotiations. Um. And without accepting the changes, I don't know how that would set us up for a, a request. To further extend the current plan. So those are my concerns there. Questions on that issue?
I know you're in a tough situation. You're trying to figure out the best way through this, but I'm a little. I, I think that there are things in here that are some improvements and probably are as far as we can get. But I'm not satisfied on all of it. I think there's still some points that it makes sense to continue to negotiate, negotiate on. And they're important to several people. So I'm, I'm just going to say right now, I'm just not in favor of us just saying we accept what Ames has sent back to us. Cause I think there should be some more negotiation, but we can take some things and say, I think there's several things that we do say. Fine, thank you for accepting that. But there's still some, there's still some sticking points. To me, I'm very supportive. I understand very much and I'm supportive of what Gilbert's saying. I also think, I, I would like to talk more about the conditional use limitations. The other thing that I'm concerned about is they, we asked that they look at doing a smaller urban reserve. There's not, and I, I think it was one of the emails I read and I was going to ask to clarify with you. It looked like it was a very, very small decrease in the amount, in the size of the urban reserve, particularly considering, you know, what they've annexed in the last ten years. You know, so I, I wanted them to take a harder look at that urban reserve and say, now is this really realistic in ten years? Because what we're doing, and I agree that the, the, in, in the uses that are inside a building, we've taken all of those out the bed and breakfast, all those kinds of things. And I think that's good. But, and I can see where there's some of the other uses that are still in there, that yes, you don't want maybe right next to residential subdivision, residential areas inside city limits. But the urban reserve goes out so far, it just doesn't make sense to me to make all those limitations. And it makes more sense, I think, to constrict the urban reserve a little, you know, significantly further than to say we've got two tiers of urban reserve or something like that, because that gets ridiculous. So I just want them to say, really? Ten years? You're really gonna, you know, you really need all that land for development in ten years? When you're doing affordable housing inside Ames right now, and you're doing some infill right now. And we other, have other communities that inside their city limits or close to them are doing some things. I just don't, I just don't see the need for that much land. So those, those are the issues I guess I have. I'd, I'd be happy. I think I'd be okay with the, some of those, the, the limits on the conditional uses. If the urban reserve just weren't so darn large. It just seems like it's pulling, it's just reaching way out into the county.
And it's tying up, tying things up for ten, for ten years.
Ten years.
Years, that, that is of concern. And what that does.
Need for conditional uses specifically, tying them up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I also just, having read through Ames's document, there was areas that were just confusing. You know, they reference it going to twenty thirty three, but then in other areas, they kind of reference twenty thirty two. So they weren't consistent with their dates. And I know that's a minor, but I'm just picking me. On page ten, this is where I was trying to figure out with land division. On it, it says, under land divisions, says, in these areas, cities agree to waive the exercise of their extra territorial subdivision authority based on the land division policies of the plan. The county retains review authority. But then the next sentence says divisions for creation of new development lots is not permitted. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused. Is that talking two different things? Or are we saying, yes, you can do this in one paragraph, but the first line in the next paragraph, you're saying, no, you can't, no, you can't do this.
You're in this document?
Yep, I'm in this document, page ten. It's titled, uh, land use designation policies. And it starts out with agriculture and farm service.
Oh, yeah.
But then I'm looking at land divisions. So I'm just. I, I'm just, I, I don't get what it means. Like I said, I wasn't sure, am I reading this?
No, it, it means the county in the ag farm service designation is the only cooperator reviewing land divisions. However, we're bound to policies per the plan in our review. And that would include not creating new development lots.
So we retain the review of land divisions, but we're not allowing land divisions. Is, is that what you're saying?
It allows parcel line adjustments. So, yeah. Or it would allow the reduction. You could divide land to carve off a piece for a home, as long as the remainder wasn't buildable. And that's the kind of thing we would have full review authority over.
Okay, it's just unclear.
Yeah.
It's unclear to me. I think it's going to be unclear to the general public if they're reading this, um, thinking, okay, we have review authority, but then well.
And.
Can't do anything with, with that. That's just kind of how I, how I read it.
Yeah, I, I think as part of the finalization process, if that's the route we go, you know, county staff will be taking the lead on that. And part of what we need to do is this is, you know, this is the draft for public outreach. Half of this is going to be a twenty eighty agreement. And it's kind of parsing out those clear policies for review that you just talked about that are kind of mixed in with some of these more of land use guiding policies. So definitely we'll be making it clearer through that process for sure. I agree.
Yeah, because we'd want that. I mean, this is out for the public to see right now. I think that's where confusion comes in, is what is allowed and what isn't allowed.
I'm ready to move on to conditional uses, but happy just to take any questions now too. If you've got other things about this document.
Sorry, I am still trying to wrestle with the land divisions.
Okay.
Divisions for the creation of new development lots are not permitted.
That's an ag and farm service.
In ag and farm service. Parcels thirty five net acres or greater may be divided for the purpose of constructing a dwelling. Is that not a new development lot?
No. It, it's an existing buildable parcel that's just being reduced in size. So we're not creating a second lot in that instance. We're certainly reconfiguring and, and, you know, gonna end up with a parcel of land with a house on it and, and remaining ag land or remaining natural areas, but.
Rest goes into an outlaw that's not developable.
Right. Or a deed restriction.
So the sole advantage of that is really to let somebody, give somebody an opportunity to get funding without, to get, yeah, to get financing for their house without having to go to the problem financing all this farmland.
Right.
Cause that assumes somebody else is going to have the outpost.
Yep.
And they're not going to put a building on it, or at least not going to put a home on it. And that is, that is a valid issue. Cause I've gone through that before. But it doesn't help somebody build another house.
No, right, yeah.
The purpose is just for financing.
Yeah.
So if I owned that thirty five acres and I wanted to build a house for my mom, could I?
No.
Under any circumstance.
In that situation, it's already a house there, or you just have thirty?
Yeah, I already live there. I already, I already own it and live, live there, but I want to build a house for my mom. With or without a plan?
Both.
And so how would I do it?
You can't.
There's no, there's no, like.
We've got the ADU ordinance that we're proposing. Um, and if you weren't in urban reserve, we've had folks, you know, apply to do rural residential expansion. You know, you could meet, try to do an amendment to the plan to designate it as something that would allow a second lot if, if certain standards were met.
But without a plan, I would have to go to Ames.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Do you want me to talk about conditional uses?
Yeah.
Great. So you did request that no limits on conditional uses were part of the plan. Ames came back with a more limited list. If you wanted to move forward, we'd recommend accepting these changes. I can go through what's left. It's more industrial uses that have, you know, clearer nuisance issues. Or just due to scale, for instance, a commercial solar farm that could take up hundreds of acres. If that was in an area where a city wanted to grow in the future, that might be hard for them to grow around, quite honestly, and put in infrastructure. The issue of creating non-conformities with the changing our code to disallow uses and then having these existing uses under current CUPs. You know, not be able to expand, rebuild, we can address that through an amendment, through the same amendment process. You know, we can create a CUP for expansion of non-conforming conditional use permits. I, the goal isn't to get rid of these existing uses. The goal is just to prevent future additional incompatibilities.
So how many of those uses that are still there? How many of those have you had applications for? In the urban fringe area?
For new?
The ones that are still in the plan, not, not the ones they've removed.
So we did an update for the Isaac Walton Leagues. Their range a couple of years ago, um, to bring them into conformance.
We did a campground in twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
So we've done some surface mineral extraction.
What is the current process for, under a conditional use permit? What is the current process now and what changes by having these?
We currently, when we get an application in, just email the city. Any city that is within two miles of, and let them know and take comments. Often those comments include recommended conditions or concerns that we try to address. And then we bring those to our board of adjustment. To consider.
So that's what your current process now. So if you have listed what are on here.
They wouldn't be able to request an application.
Yeah.
They could request a reasoning.
Not at all. Wouldn't be able to request an application, not at all.
Just know we don't allow that.
Yeah. Which we do with a lot of things.
No, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the basis of planning, separating uses and not allowing certain things in certain places.
The Isaac Walton League was granted permission because they were already existing use.
They've been there since.
They've been there since.
Yeah.
Day one.
Yep. And we could build in a process for uses like that to continue to be granted, you know, limited expansions. That would be possible.
Yeah, that's what I understood. So, so really, most of those, you're not going to get somebody asking for a new use.
So have you had any permits requested, but they haven't gone through and, you know, built or whatever, any of these areas?
Related to the, the use here?
Right.
No. We've had, if we've, like I said, the only one we did Isaac Walton League's update and campground, but.
And mineral extraction.
Yeah. I've never seen a application for drag strip. All our wind energy things are outside of this area.
Yeah.
So.
That's also, it brings to mind why I have a concern about how big the urban reserve area is. We get complaints all the time about the mines.
About the what? I'm sorry.
Mines.
Mines.
Which have been there for twenty some years. So we've been allowing people to build up close to them and what happens, right? So I, seeing that, seeing all the urban reserve that all that gets, is going to go up around areas that we know, there's going to be some issues if people build there.
And I should clarify that the mine example I gave you yesterday, that's not in the urban reserve.
Riverside doesn't go to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But there are probably some other uses in the urban reserve or.
Sure, there's some mineral extraction uses, for instance, off of South Dayton, south of highway thirty.
Yeah, so there, there were still, there will be that kind of an issue, even if that one isn't an apples to apples comparison. There will be those kinds of issues. The larger the urban reserve is, the more that you're going to end up with potential residential developments close to some uses that aren't going to be compatible, that are existing uses.
Yes, and I guess the flip side would be, there wouldn't be any new potential incompatibilities. And it's not going to be rural residential development, it'd be city.
It's true.
Yeah.
I think one thing I noticed too in Ames's response is I really didn't see anything in re, and, and I may have missed it. In my reading, really talking about environmentally sensitive areas. That was a little bit concerning because that was something that folks that are here in this room and others brought up. I think at every meeting and just about every email that I've received that, that referenced that. And I just feel that they did not take that into consideration in their proposal and would have liked to have seen something a little bit more. How that, how they would look at or address environmentally sensitive areas. Particularly as it comes around Worley Creek. Cause it's that Southwest Ames that's.
So let me ask, and I wish, I wish what we had done is taken our letter and this urban fringe plan and just looked from one to the other, like original source documents. We've got several
Memos.
Memos, you know, right now. And, and I, I, I'm starting to, when I look at them, like, and it's just one this morning I found where it wasn't consistent. And I wish we could just take this document and this letter.
Yeah, I did that in, in an appendix to your latest memo.
The appendix.
The appendix A is exactly what you requested in your letter and the changes that listed.
Okay, I, I need to, I need to clarify then, because that's where I got concerned. And I know this was just, yeah, maybe a it's an appendix A number two.
The city did not support the request to allow, to not allow annexation of any urban reserve overlay area.
And it's the next line, and that's the one that got me concerned. The city did recommend removing the urban reserve overlay south of Worley Creek and west of George Washington Carver, south of one ninetieth. The railroad, the west of the railroad tracks is not in there.
I, I think it was pointed out to me after drafting this memo, how that language was really confusing. And it's clear in city staff's memo. I, I tried to clarify it with the map. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I mean, that, that's the problem with having so many documents. You know, you've done a good job of putting in, you know, a lot of the explanation, but, but that's where I, that's, I got a little concerned when I was looking at this morning and I saw that, and I thought, I just, and I, I ran out of time, because what I wanted to do is kind of put everything else aside and just look at this in my letter.
And I'm, I'm happy to update that appendix too for a future meeting.
That, that's, that's the one thing, because it does, yeah, that's, that's one inconsistency that's, you know. We just missed a few words, but missing the few words, we, we lost a half a section.
Amelia, do you have more slides still? Or I'm just trying to decide, should we, if you have more to go over.
I was just going to talk about one confusing area.
Okay.
And then we can, yeah.
Okay, are you okay if we, if we move forward? Okay.
Keep going. Keep going. So we had requested for parcels under thirty-five acres in size. Can we also allow reductions inside of, for those if they're otherwise buildable? So let's say you've got ten acres. And it's buildable. Can we allow a division to make the remainder an outlaw, have a smaller lot for your house? We also requested that kind of for commercial development and conditional uses. I think the language was just unclear. And so city council didn't directly take action on that. That's something we could continue to work through though, if we accept the changes. I just wanted to point that out. I did just want to note though that, you know, the parcels that are smaller than thirty-five acres are smaller because there's been land divisions prior and they're probably already developed. And so is this facilitating further rural residential development? It could be. So I just wanted to point out that issue. If you're really looking for a house per quarter, quarter section, rural density, this policy isn't gonna, gonna lead us there. But if you're just looking for more flexibility and maybe a little bit higher density than that, it would. So just so we're all on the same page. Um, so these are your alternatives. And again, we would from staff's perspective, I'm just, again, concerned that we're not going to get any further negotiations out of this. We're just going to end up with no plan or a really reduced plan that just addresses subdivision authority. So from that perspective, we'd recommend accepting the changes and requesting to extend the, the current plan while we do that.
Okay. Any further questions?
Not at the time.
Okay. Why don't we move to public comment? Bryce, would you mind watching the clock for us? I know it's been a very long meeting so far, and I know we've all gotten a lot of emails. We've had lots of conversations. We have read all of your emails. I'm going to ask you to limit your comment to two minutes, please. And if you've already talked to us, I'm going to ask that you leave, leave the mic for someone who has not had a chance to address us yet. But certainly you are free to, to make comment. And we'll start with Christine Hauser, Hausner, sorry. And if you could go to the, yeah, the podium. Is it turned on? Yeah, if you could state your name, that would be great too. Oh dear. And we've got lapels too that we could use.
Oh, that one's green. Oh, there we are. So Christine Hausner, thirty-five oh five, two hundred and forty-fifth street. I didn't really come here with a speech because you guys all know how I feel. There are just some concerns that I have with, you know, I keep hearing, well, that's how they voted in the twenty forty plan. This is what is reflected in the twenty forty plan. Well, with regards to Southwest Ames, it is not what they reflected in the twenty forty plan, because they voted to leave all of Southwest Ames out. Everything Champlin, Meadow Glen, out. Even, they even made a motion to bring in tier one and tier two, and they voted no. So the UFP is not reflecting what they voted for in the twenty forty plan. For a division, it's like, for example, my neighbors, I have first right refusal. They've been there for sixty years to buy their property when something happens to them. We share a lot line. I should be able to get that ten acres if I want just the timber and the pasture and sell off the house so I can afford it. I should be able to do that. If my parents, they're in their eighties now, if they want to take part of their land and put a house there for me so that I can help take care of them, we don't have thirty-five acres. I still should be able to do that because out of the two mile fringe, we would be going to you guys to make that decision, just like we did earlier this evening with the other subdivisions. So, you know, you know how I feel about the environmental impact. I haven't given you guys more than enough information to make a determination about that. But Southwest Ames is completely separate from anything else that is around the city of Ames. We have certain conditions, we have certain issues that aren't in other areas, especially because of Iowa State. So you're talking about being respectful of, of, you know, people are coming up to the mines and now they're complaining about the mines. Well, that's happened there. They complain about Iowa State and all the ag stuff that's going on there, because it is a rural area. So I would ask that, you know, I don't, I don't mind having a urban fringe plan. It doesn't bother me. It just bothers me what you are going to agree to. That's what bothers me. So eighteen thousand acres is asinine to me. And the fact that we've already shown you that Southwest Ames shouldn't be in it at all. We should be Ag and Farm Service. That should be where we should be.
Thank you, Christine. I'm sorry.
So, thank you. Oh, by the way, I don't want to interrupt.
Thanks. Next, we have Liesel Danielson.
Hi, Liesel Danielson, two nine eight one South Dakota Avenue. I already cried when I got here, so please, oh, hold it in while I speak. This plan isn't about transparency. We know we live in the urban Ames or Mid-Fringe. It is about control. They are not willing to give away any of their controls. If you approve this plan as written, you are in agreement with the city's intention to shut down over twenty thousand acres.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm going to press pause for a second. I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear when there's conversation happening. I apologize.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay. If you approve this plan as written, you are in an agreement with the city's intention to shut down over twenty thousand acres in the fringe. Well over a hundred years of land on hold until the city may or may not get to it. Land that doesn't belong to anyone but the people that own it. Sorry. This means zero new buildable lots. Outside of the rural residential existing maybe, but for over twenty thousand acres, zero new buildable lots. That is the intent. Now it appears the ability to make a larger lot smaller to help people get a mortgage is going to be possibly taken off the table as was just addressed. This has a real effect on people. My dream of building on our family property took years and it has made it much more difficult by policies of the current fridge plan. I have credit card loans for my house because I can't get a mortgage. This plan would do the same thing to every property in the fringe, but the possible exception of the rural residential existing. That is unreasonable and wrong. There won't be even a consideration. With this policy as written, the answer will be no. If you don't agree to this, at least people can go to the city and the city has to say no. And then we can challenge it. We can appeal that. But with this policy, if this county agrees to it and the city agrees to it, the answer is no. Okay, we have had a target on our backs on our land since at least nineteen ninety-seven. My parents have been going meetings since I was in high school. Now I have high schoolers. We are unique, as you know, because of the tremendous amount of Iowa State lived at Worley Creek, when an entire neighborhood stands up and says, no, not here. I think you should listen. Please give the people of Southwest Ames peace. We need you to stand strong with us.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Christensen.
Alex Christensen, two nine eight four, South Dakota Avenue. Um, my first, I want to, I say how much I appreciate, I think all three of you are asking great questions and really getting to the bottom of why we're frustrated and why we feel Ames is giving so little in this plan. I think this plan has gotten so complicated and confusing. Uh, I simply want you to not let Ames utilize the fringe plan to place restrictions on our property above and beyond what they can do themselves. That doesn't feel like I'm asking for much. Uh, one example is the urban reserve. They were asked to reduce it, and we showed them, the map was put up about drawing Worley Creek and the parts they wanted taken out. Well, a conversation was had with Kelly, and he said, if any of your land is north of Worley Creek, you are still in urban reserve. So that map is actually a lot less that they took out of urban reserve. The land included in urban reserve and urban growth includes roughly twenty thousand acres. The city has annexed roughly four thousand in the last twenty years, which means they want restrictions placed on one hundred years worth of land. And the life of the plan is only five years. Areas southwest of Ames should be removed from urban reserve and urban growth. In addition to having the most public comments, Southwest makes the least sense for growth due to the combination of environmentally sensitive land and Iowa State land. Removing those designations is the best way to protect the land. The fringe plan as currently proposed by the city of Ames is bad for the land and for rural residents of Story County. If the plan has no clear benefit to those living in the fringe, then the plan should be allowed to dissolve.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Phil.
Thank you.
Phil Isavely, third, thirty-one oh eight, South Dakota Avenue. First thing I want to say is I really appreciate the comments, questions from the board today, this morning. And they are very, what do I want to say? Trying to find out exactly what is in this plan since it is very confusing. Anyway. I'd like to first say good morning, and well, now it's afternoon or whatever. I would, I would assume that you've all read my email, uh, letter that I sent. And so I'm not going to repeat any of that. I would like to say a few words regarding all of us involved in the pro, in this process, the board supervisors, the county planning staff, and the residents of Story County. We continue, or we all contribute to the community every day in our actions and deeds. We all contribute to the community through our work, our education, schools, diverse backgrounds, origins, families. We pay taxes, volunteering, and supporting our community and neighbors and caring for others in many other ways. We all are concerned for the land and the use of the land. We are all concerned for the place we live and how to make it a better place. We all are concerned for our families and friends. We all want to do the best we can for this community we all live in. We all want to make Story County and Ames a better place to live. At the end of the day, all we want to, to make this, we all want to make this a better place and improve and enrich our lives and others. I would ask the board, the board concern all comments, time and efforts that have gone into the discussions and do what is best for the community at large.
Thank you, Phil.
And thank you for allowing me to address the board.
Next we'll have Kim Christensen, and I do see there's one hand raised on Zoom, so we will, um, we will go to the Zoom, uh, comment after Kim.
Kim Christensen, twenty-nine eighty-five, South Dakota Avenue. You know, we've spent a couple of decades working on this thing. It seems like we should be having a Christmas party or something like that. Maybe next time. The, uh, speaking from the trustee, I, I won my first election. And now I'm a trustee, actually elected trustee of the Washington Township. So I feel I really have a responsibility to discuss their issues. My concern is that the plan that Ames is trying to put together is really an economic lockdown for Washington Township and all the twenty thousand acres around Ames. I mean, you take away the conditional uses, there's no way to have businesses or anything. How creative or not creative they might be, drag strips don't have to be drag cars. It can be bikes or even bicycles. You know, so there's all sorts of different things. And when you take away the ability to do the single lot split, which I personally have a concern that the legality of us being able to go to Ames and ask them for permission, they have to have a reason why they don't allow a split. I think the state law supports the possibility that we can do lot splits unless you make an agreement with them that you say, no, we can't do lot splits. So I think there's a, some real legal issues that need to be taken into account here. And then my, as, as far as the regular, uh, the deal that the Washington Township has already given you, that we'd like to see the Ag and Farm Service spread over the whole area. The, this deal where Kelly has decided that all the land, that if you have land on the north side of the creek, your whole land is now urban reserve. That takes in the Ballantines, that takes in, uh, McCades, that takes in everybody's. And, and Isavely's, uh, Munson's, everybody's land. That anybody who has land on the, on our side. So there's virtually no land that's going to be taken out of the urban reserve from that particular, uh, perspective. I, after everybody else has thought, we really appreciate the time and effort. It has been great to get to know you and, and, and work with you. And congratulations on your lack.
Thank you. Is it Kent Bicker?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So I'm sorry I couldn't make it there in person, but I wanted to thank you for your time. I, I've attended over the past months and voiced my concerns regarding, you know, the Southwest Ames. And I would like to thank the supervisors for their time getting to know the area and listening. And I really feel that, um, you know, address some of those issues of the changes that you put to Ames. Unfortunately, I feel the state of Ames didn't seem receptive to the time that you've put in or we spent, um, regarding the Southwest Ames. Again, it hasn't been months, it's been years, and that twenty forty plan did not include us. But there just seems to be a reason that, um, they say we're not the annex and things, but I don't know the resistance, why then we can't be changed to rural residential existing. You know, I have concerns specifically about the budget, Washington Township, the fire protection, things like that, along with the environment. I think the Southwest has been very vocal of what we've asked for, and really, um, I'm sad Ames hasn't really been consider of that or willing to meet on that. So, you know, also, I guess when we talked about the plan, I heard why it would be good. I heard a lot of talk about annexation. Um, I assume most as voluntary annexation, because, and, and I, I don't see the advantage because of his voluntary, both parties are agreeing. I think it gains nothing for involuntary annexation. And so it, it looks like kind of smoke and mirrors to me. I don't see what, um, the county is getting from the plan. And, um, you know, we talked several times about how if you had a family member on your lot that you want to develop for a kid or something. I mean, the obvious answer, the only way you can do it is to sell your land to a developer and then buy a house back from him so you can live next to your kid. And that doesn't seem right, that you can't develop your own land, but if you sell it to a developer, you can buy a house to live next to your kid. So because of those reasons, specifically the safety of the whole Washington Township, the funding for the fire department and the environment, I would ask you, if we can't remove Southwest from Ames, I'm not in favor of the fringe plan. And thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next we have Brad Perkins.
Brad Perkins, fifty-five hundred, two hundred and fourth Street, Ames. Family runs Raspberry Hill Bed and Breakfast, and I'd just like to point out that we do trying to develop a campground, and we would fall within that still. My thought here, you already know how I feel, especially with the conditional use permits limitations and that type of thing. But the one thing I wanted to express today is that this process has been exhaustive. The amount of time, especially the amount of time this board has spent going to public hearings, public meetings, getting public comment, listening, talking, getting inputs, whether that's emails and phone calls and discussions, late night, evening meetings at the library. Overall, after all of that input, it does seem fairly obvious where the people of, of the county fall with regards to this plan. And by and large, they have major concerns and are opposed to the vast majority of it. But well, as far as I can tell, the biggest proponents and possibly the only proponents of this is Ames planning and zoning. And if that's the case, at the end of this, do we decide that after all of that input, is the input of the people who own the property and run the businesses and whose lives are affected by it, or is the only input really important come from Ames? And I don't think that's the case. I think the whole point of having board I think the whole point of having board of adjustment and board of supervisors and planning and zoning committees is so that on an individual case by case basis, we're able to decide as a county, what should be built, what should we be doing, is this the right fit, is this the right answer? How do we regulate, balance regulating for the greater good against the rights of the individual? Adding additional layer upon layer upon layer of regulations does nothing but confuse and make it more difficult. Getting through the process as it was before, this plan was already difficult, and as a result, I am still five years into a lawsuit over issues of the fringe plan. I would recommend we let the fringe plan die.
Thank you.
Becky Christensen, twenty-nine eighty-five, South Dakota Avenue Ames. I just wanted to address one thing, and that is people keep referring to the twenty forty plan that's already been voted on by Ames. I've just pulled up the map again on my phone, and I would encourage all of you to really take a look at their land use map that they voted on in the, for the twenty point forty plan. Not the part including the fringe, the land use plan map. And Southwest Ames is not on that. Meadow Glen is shown as an existing subdivision. It's not shown as a growth area. And, um, I think that's where a lot of confusion has come in is because Ames put a section about the fringe plan in their twenty forty plan, which they voted on, but of course they were voting on their wish list, not something, you know, obviously the plan is still being worked on. So I think it's caused a lot of confusion for people. I encourage you to look at the actual map. And thank you again for all your time and your effort and for listening to us and, and your very good questions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who's wishing to make public comment? There's a little blue slip, if you could, uh, if you could fill out this little blue slip right here and then, um, hand it to, uh, Shelley, the clerk. Is there anyone on Zoom, Bryce, that you see? I don't, no. Um, did I skip one? They do not have that one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jim Arthur. I live at twenty-two twenty-four Ironwood Court. Uh, if you know, you know, Ironwood, we're right behind the Ames or the, uh, Iowa Beef Industry Building, the intersection of US thirty and, uh, University Boulevard. I live in an area that has townhouses and, um, fourteen, uh, individual residences. Nine of those folks, none of those homes overlook Worley Creek as it passes through, uh, under US thirty, heads north toward the old Ames Golf and Country Club, hits a green berm, former green, uh, from the old country club, and then immediately hands, heads east, uh, toward our properties. And then, uh, it, then all of a sudden it takes a bend and heads north. Next time we see it is under, um, University Boulevard, um, near the stadium. My concern is for these folks here who have their properties at stake and their livelihood and future at stake. I'm concerned about that. And what, and what might happen if there's future, uh, residential development? Streets are put in, driveways and all of that. And where's all that water going to go? Perhaps in the Worley Creek. Right now already, uh, we've observed Worley Creek taking a bite out of the, uh, out of the bank, uh, below our homes. And, um, I don't think we have any danger of having our houses slip down the hillside, but, but we're concerned about the erosion that's happening, and it could get worse if there's more development, uh, out west of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Steve Andrews.
Firstly, thank you for your time. Uh, you probably noticed my accent means I am not American. Although I am now a US citizen, uh, I come from England and I have two questions really, partly to do with my ignorance of American planning law. I am the president of the Meadow Glen Road Association for my sins. A lot of the concerns we have have already been addressed, but I have two questions. I was under the impression that if Meadow Glen Road was to be annexed, it had to become an island. I then heard this lady say it is effectively an island. So the question I have is, when does an island become an island? And the second question I have is, we would all like to stay as, uh, residents of Story County. So what can Story County do to help us in that aim? Thank you.
Thank you. No one else on Zoom, correct? Okay. Okay. Amelia, would you like to address the island question?
Sure. So state laws states that annexations cannot result in the creation of an island, which is something that's totally surrounded by city boundaries. There was a question from Supervisor Hiddens about, you know, could we have like a strip of land that connects it out to the county? And, and my response there was that would still be effectively an island because I think the goal is to just have uniform boundaries and clear service delineations. So I, the effective statement wasn't anything in state law, it was just a right, yeah.
So if I, if I could try and just restate that, what you're saying is if an area is completely surrounded by annexed land or land that's been annexed into the city, that is an island. Even by creating a strip of land, effectively, that would be an island. So you, the concern is there would be
Even if we could allow it, I don't know if it's the best planning choice. If, if I was the city of Ames, now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
It's a workaround for my planning principle.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not state code that says that you cannot do that.
Right, but is it, but you're saying is Does it make sense to do front planning?
Right, and, and we're, we're trying to ensure that we have smart, effective, controlled growth.
I'm ha- happy to take any other questions based on comments or just how to move forward.
Has Ames, through any of your conversations with them, talked about why they included Southwest Ames when it is not part of their twenty forty plan? Or part of the mapping, and I'm just bringing that up because that's been brought up in the past, it's been brought up today.
Yes, um, I think when the gross scenarios of the twenty forty plan was being, were being formulated, um, they came up with this system of tiers for areas for further study in terms of sewer capacity. There is already a sewer study southwest of Ames. I, I, I can't give you specifics, but you know, there's a, there's the tiers and those studies that went into the development of the tiers that ended up influencing the final adopted land use framework map. And, and that does show the urban reserve over that area, that final adopted map.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we officially closed public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry.
And I, I do think, and I'm trying to find it here, um, when this question has come up before, I did have city staff write you all a memo on it that was on a previous agenda, and I'm, I'm, I have a copy of it in my stack of stuff here. I'll try to find it.
So Ames requested that it be in this plan.
It's in their twenty forty plan.
It is in twenty
Well, it, it's not, it's not our plan. It's not, it's not Story County's. It's really not fair to put, um, Ms. Shoneman in the position to have to defend Ames's plan. And that's certainly not what we're trying to do. We just are trying to make sure that we're clear on what was or wasn't agreed upon, but
To clarify how the mapping of our plan worked, um, Marcus and I took the PDF of the plan, the twenty forty plan, future land use framework map, and we traced over it to create the urban reserve.
Okay. Would it be possible, I'm just gonna, would it be possible to, um, respond to Ames, Ames's proposal and, um, with some adjustments of our own to their proposal? Like removing Meadow Glen from urban growth? Or ensuring that there's that one mile buffer between Ames and Gilbert?
Yeah, you can definitely do that. It wasn't stashed recommendation just because, you know, after.
Right, no, 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 I, I know.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're trying to make sure that we can keep, keep moving forward. And, and I appreciate that. I think we all appreciate that, that you're trying to facilitate the cooperation.
Yes, so, but yeah, that's an option. I think it was alternative two. And, and you certainly, you know, fourth option, tabling it.
I don't think we want to table anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, Shelley, remand. If you want it, you know, a letter prepared by staff or something for a future agenda, that probably wouldn't be till January, but that's, we could do something like that again.
What would be effectively the effective removing Meadow Glen from urban reserve?
They'd need to go through an amendment to map it as urban growth or urban reserve to be annexed. If, if it had to come to, to the city.
Okay, and it would take all three cooperators to agree to that.
Two.
Two.
But otherwise, I mean, the urban reserve just imposes those restrictions on conditional uses and allows annexation, you know, effectively for who reviews land divisions, that kind of thing. There wouldn't be a change.
I do think a little bit like you mentioned Supervisor Merkin, that the urban reserve seems like a quite a large area still. They, they, they may have, uh, given us an inch. But I wanted much more, that to be narrowed much more. I still have concerns with, um, the limited amount of land that would be available in Southwest Ames. Is of concern to me because of, because of ISU. And just some of the developers that I've talked to that are concerned about the terrain in that area as well.
So, yeah, I think it was in, um, one of the emails said that the urban reserve was seventeen thousand acres. Is that, whenever you remember.
I can try to find it.
It was a lot, yeah.
You were quoted, the
Yeah.
An ex level of four thousand in the past twenty years. Then seventeen thousand two fifty-one was in the email as the urban reserve overlay. So that's where I think it doesn't really fit with the reality. If those are the correct numbers. So if, and, and, and we know there's concerns about specific areas, I'm concerned about the area between one eightieth and one ninetieth. Not simply because of the reasons that Gilbert wants to keep, you know, preserve its separate identity, but of the fact that if you're looking at ag land and the CSR, remember the map?
Mm-hmm.
You did. That's some of the hu- best ag land in Story County. There's high warrant suitability ratings on that land. So I'm just going right into the heart of great, you know, what's great ag land and taking yet more of it. And putting Gilbert in a situation where they might lose, um, might lose opportunities for rural grants, where they might lose a whole bunch of other things. I just think that if we say not annex between one eightieth and one ninetieth, neither party would annex there. That takes some land out of the urban reserve, correct? If we remove Meadow Glen from the urban reserve, that takes some land out of the urban reserve. So instead of just telling, you know, saying Ames specifically, just reduce it more. Let's find the areas where there's good reasons to reduce it, and those are, those are two. I don't know how the others feel about that.
That be something you want us to sit here and identify or. Have staff or staff come back with. A proposal?
Well, I think we can identify some areas from what we've looked at. Unless you would like to have staff do it. I'm, I'm just thinking, how do we, how do we? If, if we know there are some things we concern, we are concerned about. Maybe we just, we need to communicate those.
Looking at the map on. This document. Hopefully you know that I'm looking at because it's hard to tell the colors in here. You're saying take Meadow Glen out of the annexable area. I think the rest of it by the hash marks are urban reserve overlay. Is that? Or is that just urban reserve?
Around the outside.
So the solid blue is urban growth.
Correct. Yes.
Right, and then the blue hashtag is urban reserve overlay, right?
Yeah.
And the urban growth area is.
Next.
Urban growth is.
Yeah, it's really hard to see.
Urban growth is the blue. Right, so this isn't, you know.
Right.
This is the draft that we.
No, I know.
Yeah, so just, but just so you can see clearer.
Yeah, no, it's, that's why I said it was hard to see on this, this little map.
Um, but then Ames's changes aren't really reflected on this map. So that. The Meadow Glen area. The area they kind of circled in yellow on that little map. Would then be rural residential on this map with urban reserve overlay, but if you're asking just to remove the urban reserve overlay. That's, you could ask that.
I'm sorry, public comments closed.
And I, I have the link to the interactive map if you want me to pull that one up too. Again, it doesn't show Ames's changes, but it's something. The header for this section.
The header for this section.
For the section. The slide 10. That's a link. And I do have the CSR map too, if you want to look at it. Just needs a minute to load. So we can zoom in anywhere.
Zoom out. Keep going.
West.
Yeah.
Thanks. Sorry Bryce.
It just seems like a lot, a lot of area that. Ames is kind of locking up.
So. Do you have a question on this area that I can answer? I guess I don't quite know what we're trying to visualize.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to figure out what, what we ask you. To.
To do.
To do, to, how to respond to Ames. Am I right in that? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry Phil. It, we can't, we can't. Phil, I'm sorry.
I don't care. I'm just, look at that right there. Where Whirly Creek is, from there to the north, most of us are there.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then could you just pull the PowerPoint slide with this area shown on it again? Just maybe that'll help. Thanks Bryce. Next one, thirteen. So that's the area in red that Ames would be taking out.
Phil, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
So again. Additional areas would be in addition to the areas outside of red. If, 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 if that helps frame what you're asking for, because Ames is okay with removing that area from the urban reserve already. So it'd just be, you know, besides that area. Outlined in red. You could have additional requests for.
To expand the area outlined in red.
Yeah.
So it would still be thirty-two, the lines in red. That would be in the fringe area.
And their urban reserve area.
Or the urban reserve area.
That's what Ames has proposed, yeah. And, and I don't know about the parcels on both sides of Whirly Creek, you know. When I. Discussed how this would be put into practice with Ames staff. I suggested they could be split along the creek line and that wouldn't be an issue and they seemed open to that. So how, you know, if. If a parcel is on both sides, how we handle it, we can work that out. I don't think Ames made a clear recommendation or voted on anything yet, so, yeah.
The question, the question was what is the area in light blue?
In the current plan, that's the urban growth area.
That is urban, that in the current plan, that's urban growth, but that is the area that Ames has said they will. Rather than call it urban growth, call it rural residential existing.
Except for.
Except for.
The Champlin property.
Uh huh.
Which is. If you kind of look at the red area, the blue that immediately touches the red and draw, you know, a typical quarter. Section size there. That, that square.
That little bubble.
And so imagine if, if the square gets annexed, then it cuts off the rest of the blue. I think that's the issue.
So part of that blue is Champlin.
Yes, and Ames did not agree to make that rural residential existing. They said keep that urban growth.
Because of the utility issue.
Yes. But.
They see that as more developed.
Yeah.
I know there's people who don't agree, so I'm not saying that it is.
Right.
Don't agree. I'm just saying that's what they've said.
That's what they said. And east of that area. You know, where you kind of start to get in, in. Adjacent to city limits up in to the city. That's the area they said they could make rural residential existing, but wanted to keep the option to annex it. Open if they had to, which is why they put the reserve overlay on it.
So if we would say something, throwing stuff there, we didn't want anything south of thirty. Throw that out there. Addressing the. The area between Ames and Gilbert. That we don't want, or. We want them to, so that Gilbert maintains that autonomy, I guess. I know the fringe plan would be. For ten years. I'm sorry, I know the French plan would be for ten years.
Five years. Five to review and five.
Review and five. And so, okay, then that's, I think it's answered my own question then. I'm just saying is. Yeah. I think that's where the dates come to the plan room, seeing different dates in there is throwing me off. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to see if Ames is, is really projecting to have that amount of growth. In five years' time. I know that doesn't put. Make everyone calm. It's like, okay, this is still on the back burner out there, but.
But it will always be on the back.
Well, that's, 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 that's right. That's what I think too. And. Is there something we could kind of push back and say, well, this, this is where we want. You're gonna review it in five years.
I just hope that people don't think that if it comes out of the urban fringe that Ames can't annex.
Right.
And I really want to make sure, I mean, everybody understands that. If there's no urban fringe plan Ames can annex. I see everybody shaking, nodding their head and I'm glad, because that is not, you know. What we tried to do in this plan that we did was try to get some areas that Ames would agree not to annex.
And.
We got very little of that.
And to make clearer. Who reviews requests for development? When?
So, so. So I'm, I'm wondering, taking, taking properties out of the urban reserve. Gain some flexibility. For landowners. And that's really about it.
Just in terms of conditional uses.
Pardon?
Just in terms of conditional uses.
In terms of conditional uses. And I have to say that I, I feel like the conditional use list got improved considerably. I really do. Yeah, I, I, some of the things that were in there, the indoor uses, I just didn't see how those. You know, if at some air time, you know, Ames annexed, I just didn't see how those are going to be a big problem. So I'm glad we got those out of there.
And just to address, you know, the timeframe of this plan. So it's, it's a ten year plan, right? Five year review, automatic rego. The 2040 plan is a twenty year plan and that's where these designations. Are coming from. The urban reserve is longer range. Because in, in future plans. It's areas, you know, past the 2040 plan that are probably next. In terms of development potential. And so the city is just saying, we want to protect those areas. In the very long term. So I get that this is the shortest timeframe of all of those things, but that's kind of where you see some of those concepts. Coming from. And again, the only, you know. That. Further negotiation simply wasn't staff's recommendation just because. I have little hope they will be successful. So just. Reminder. But no, you can certainly propose other changes. That's, yeah.
Right. Now, I understand that and I appreciate you stating that. But if you don't ask. Then it's a definite no.
Yeah.
You know.
And I guess you did ask for the southwest to be removed from the urban reserve before, so I, I, I guess.
We could just reiterate that.
You could just reiterate it.
I mean, the, the. The Ames urban fringe plan. Is. Supposed to be beneficial to all cooperators. So I think we can. Reiterate that request.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we're asking to support Gilbert's request that one eightieth to one ninetieth. That area be not annexable, we're basically asking for it to be taken out of the urban reserve. But I think, still think it is good to utilize the. Language in Mayor Pop's letter. Because that simply shows that we're in support of what, why they're asking what they're asking. So.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll hold my question.
I'm just seeking clarification. So I, I get it, the one eightieth, one ninetieth would essentially out of the urban reserve. Are we then also. Kind of pushing back and saying our language was southwest Ames removed from the plan, or was it?
Removed from the urban reserve overlay.
That's, that's, yep.
Which would leave it simply ag and farm service.
Right. I don't know that that really, that addresses the urban growth. Champlin farms. Issue though. Just saying.
You'd, you'd also need a specific request related to the Champlin property since that is urban growth.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You'd need a specific request additionally for the Champlin property since that is urban growth, if you wanted to see any change on that.
So what else is in urban growth besides Champlin?
Just it.
Okay, so then we say we move the southwest area from urban reserve and urban growth.
Okay. Um, and just from my knowledge. When you're defining southwest, what is the eastern limit? Can we go back to that?
Yeah, let's look back. What do you suggest?
The Ansley property.
Where is that? Sorry.
What is it?
The new development in Ames. Oh, that Ansley.
Yeah.
Property?
Yeah. Oh.
The new residential development with some mixed use nodes and. Duplexes.
And by doing. By doing that. That would remove the risk of island creation.
So how would? So is that saying we can't define it? What, what, how would you do? What would you suggest? From the discussions we've had here for the boundaries then of what we would want removed?
I'm just gonna make a map. South of thirty. To Ansley. And make it ag farm service and. Have the Meadow Glen area rural residential existing.
Okay.
And send them a clear visual illustration.
I think that would be really good because I think that's, there's some things that haven't had that. A good map to them, so. a good map to them. So. Could, I see, could, could we see the full map again, the one that Bryce you found by, you can't that header? On that one slide. Okay, here we.
Do you zoom out?
Yeah.
Here's, here's my question. The urban growth and urban reserve, how much would, about how much is left taking those two places out that we're talking about?
In, in the southwest?
No, no. All around Ames, in the urban fringe.
Let me get my calculator out.
Yeah, that's a lot. Yeah.
And we've not, we've heard some from people in the southeast, but not as much. And we've not heard much from people in the northeast since, since one of our open houses, I think there were some people, but.
Southwest is probably about fifteen hundred acres.
Okay.
Um.
One eightieth to one ninetieth, that's probably.
I'm just counting quarters. I'm just counting sections here.
Yeah.
I have to go up there.
Are you thinking like, what would it look like if we said we'd like to see a twenty percent reduction?
Or just to see what we, just see what the reduction is from the two things we've talked about. What do you think?
Doing the math.
Doing math.
I'm gonna guess thirty six hundred.
I think it's eight thousand. Eight thousand?
Eight.
I think total.
Yeah, sections you get.
It's thirteen by four. Quarters?
Sections.
I can't, those are quarters.
Okay, one eightieth, one ninetieth, that's one mile.
Yep.
Okay, that's a section.
Yeah.
Okay, how many sections across is that?
I don't know. I didn't count those. I counted the quarters within the sections. The squares are a hundred and sixty acres each that you see up there.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Sorry.
I would say that the area we're talking about is miles more south by about five, six, five miles. It's six square miles. From six hundred and forty acres, four thousand.
Are you trying to?
It's three miles by one mile.
The boundary. Yes.
It's three miles wide by one mile. Long. So.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking about the whole thing from Carver. That's two thousand acres.
That's from Carver to highway.
Well, the Carver, the, the Carver to the railroad tracks.
It's like two thousand, like nineteen hundred.
Well, it depends honestly where we're starting from.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether we're starting, okay, but let's, let's say what we've done is maybe reduced by half. We can figure that out. I'm just saying, if it's seventeen thousand acres and what we just did by half, we'd have eight thousand acres.
If I were making the request, I think just having a clear argument about why those areas in particular were required to take out versus the numbers would be better. Um.
Makes sense. But looking at the map, I'm, I'm still, still going to make the point that with all the land that's in urban growth and urban reserve, we are not talking about huge parcels with the two things that we've just talked about.
Or that we're not making a, an outrageous request is your point.
That's what I'm trying to say. This is not outrageous in terms of the entire urban growth and urban reserve area. This is not a lot of land.
And it's a plan that would be reviewed in five years.
Correct.
So if something happened in five years, and they're like, oh, we really want to grow there. We can talk about it then.
Right. Yeah.
So I know you were writing a lot of things down. Did you, were you writing down a motion?
Um, I could make it into a motion if you'd give me.
I mean, I just, I thought maybe that was what you were working on.
Well, it's visualizing, but it can be, that helps. Um.
Okay, wait. Right. Yes, she has the changes.
Or I can list them now.
What?
There. Yeah. Great.
Yeah.
Champlin Farms to Ag Farm Service. Urban Reserve Overlay, west of the Ansley property, south of Highway thirty removed in the Meadow Glen area, making it rural residential existing. Any urban reserve between one eightieth and one ninetieth removed.
Say that last again.
Any urban reserve between one eightieth and one ninetieth removed. And having language stating, we support Gilbert's request.
We support Gilbert's request, their offer that they not, they would not annex below one eightieth. And their request that Ames not annex above one ninetieth.
And I can throw some language in about development potential of southwest. Um, the only other direction I would wonder if we wanted to give is if it's likely that they reject these requests, what would you like to do? Dissolve the plan or plan about suggestions or not bring it up?
Can we?
We're still negotiating.
See if, what they do and.
Yeah, um, they'll probably do.
It doesn't matter, but then probably.
But if you had a preference on one of those, you could indicate.
I, I think we're still in negotiations and I would just not answer that because of that matter. Um, we're still negotiating.
Okay.
So I'm not going to say what I'm going to do if somebody does.
Yeah.
Something else.
Yeah, I don't want to give a final.
No.
My final hand.
They may come up.
While I'm in the middle of negotiating.
Yeah, they could come back with something we like better than what we just told you. Stranger things have happened. So, I. Amelia, I want to thank you for your patience to this whole process. I know it's been, you put a whole lot of work in this, and I know you've, it's been difficult at times, and I want to thank you for that sincerely.
Thanks.
And I know that, you know, this isn't the recommendation that, you know, brought to us, but.
My job is to take your recommendation forward, so.
So I would make the motion.
Sorry, did you have? I just had one clarifying question. Sorry. Uh, whether we make this motion or not, do you still have to have some language or do something to extend the current urban fringe plan?
Yeah, so I think we do this motion and then you could do a second motion for the extension. I had recommended April thirtieth. I, I don't know if that'll be feasible, but you could request it.
Yeah, no. I didn't want to forget that. I didn't know if it needed to be in part of the motion or not, so.
Yeah, separate probably looks better.
Could you put the alternative back up? Okay, that language is that second paragraph. I thought the resolution number was in there. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we direct staff to make the additional changes, or the additional changes to our proposal for the fringe plan as we have discussed, and staff return with, next week with a letter outlining any additional changes for action.
Second. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And I would make a motion that we extend the current fringe plan that is set to expire, what is it, January first, to be extended to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Three, twenty twenty-three.
Or twenty twenty-three, gosh.
We'll get used to it about halfway.
Hard to think of that.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we have no departmental reports, other reports. Do we have someone from green team here?
It's me. Oh, yeah. Hi, Amelia.
Bree's here. And Bree.
Bree.
Oh, Bree's here.
Hi, Bree.
Bree.
We've got to get you a mic. There's one over there.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you. Or you can sit here.
You can't yell, sorry. You up.
I had a P D teacher for a mom.
Oh, that's good. You know, I brought her PowerPoint. I just don't know where it is.
Okay. Look at you. Okay.
Go green team update.
Well, I think this is the first time that we've come to the board, so this was recently started within the last year, and we've actually all been pretty excited about our group meetings and how we've progressed. We've come up with our task force. Amelia and I were elected chairs. We have reshaped our mission statements to fit more of our current projects. Um, and we've come up with some exciting strategies to work on in the next, you know, four fiscal years that you'll be seeing budget requests related to as well. Um, and we meet monthly. I want to go through. We'll go through, um, some of the requests and strategies that our different subarea groups are working on. The first subarea group is the outreach group. Their mission statement is to promote and offer education to model flexible solutions that build a more resilient community. Let you go through those. Um, and I don't know how in-depth you guys have been here for a while, so just, um, when we did the greenhouse, greenhouse gas inventory, one thing that was kind of left out, um, me being part of secondary roads, I kind of recognized it right away, is that we didn't look into like a deaf usage, so how much deaf we're using with as much diesel as we go through. And that, those are kind of interrelated. You can't have one without the, with the other anymore. Recycling communications, just making it everyone more aware of where our recycled containers are, what you can recycle, how you can do that. And then some more things that we're just going to take care of immediately is just, once again, helping people know where they can recycle within the building, within the community, within the county. Um, waste reduction at a countywide events. We're actually going to try some of that um, at our holiday dinner next week.
We've got plates that are, we'll be washing.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
Instead of, instead of paper.
Instead of throwing them away. Um, then we're starting to meet with different groups to see how their projects are going through the other counties, like the resource recovery to discuss. We actually, there is a big list of things that they don't take or how they want it processed out. And so we can get a clear image um, out there to people so they know what they can and can't put in a recycle bin. I think that's all.
Let's see. Um, we also were thinking about making a carbon footprint quiz available online for employees. Profiles of employees and things they're individually doing. Looking at community guarding opportunities, maybe some full solar charging stations at county parks. And that very long term, looking at transitioning to energy efficient vehicles and turf management at county buildings and how to incorporate native plantings that would filter storm water better. A lot of these will overlap with the other two categories. Our next category is environmental and physical improvements, and that subgroup is pursuing changes in our built environment and daily practices at county facilities and in our communities to promote wise use of resources for current and future generations.
And you can just see the deaf is back on there. Also, the water bottle fillers is actually, I think it's almost been completed now at this stage. Potential solar is being looked at for different buildings at this point in time. Here again, just, these will be physical recycling bins, not so much of the informational part of it. Or different ways that we can recycle different, whether we do compost or paper, that type of stuff.
Um, also electronic recycling. Um, and looking at charging stations at other county facilities. One facility that came up was the Human Services Center, which might help, you know, some of the folks that seek services there have access to wifi and charging for their phones. And then the final subgroup is purchasing policies and budgeting, and they specifically promote purchasing policies and budgeting that enhance the use of products to lessen negative impacts on human health and environment in cost-effective manners.
So once again, you'll see a lot of repeats, but some of the short, shorter things is assess what kind of lighting. I think that project has almost been completed. Do some research on how papers are being shredded, if there, we need to change the process or update the process, or see what we can do so we create less paper maybe even in the future, so we're not having to recycle so much of it.
They're also reviewing, you know, all of our existing policies to make sure there's, there's green practices built in. Um, and looking at the, looking at going to a cloud for some of our current paper services.
Yes.
Um, the last thing that we wanted to bring up, oh, I'm sorry. There's, they're also looking at work from home opportunities for week work potential as well. And the, the last thing they're really focusing on is a climate resiliency action plan, an RFP. Um, and that is something that we're looking at a climate action plan, you know, countywide for our communities, not just focused on county facilities, but countywide, what can we do for our residents? And so we will be doing an RFP for that. You'll see a budget request related. Um, and one opportunity that Leanne found was submitting a letter of intent with the University of Iowa for a class to take on that plan to, you know, maybe hopefully reduce some of the costs and, and, and work with the University of Iowa class that's hopefully on the cutting edge of these types of things. With that, we can take any questions or Leanne, I sure has a lot to add. She's such a great resource in all of this and has really helped us stay on track.
I'm just going to mention this because I had, we had a presentation on it yesterday, PFAS. Forever Chemical. I, I, we had a presentation at the Water Shit Working Group, D N R, and it was very, it was a real downer. That's all I can say because they're everywhere. They're in water supplies. How do you get them out? Because they were made to be forever. But the thing is, we can do, or we really need to do, there's technologies that they're going to be working to get them out, but it's limiting them, avoiding them whenever possible. And Joby was in the presentation, and I assume Joby is in your group or is there, you know, that might, I, I don't even know after yesterday how we think, start to think about that, other than say, are there things that we do at the county that we can replace some, you know, plastics? I don't know. There's so many of them. But are there some, if we could figure out, are there some really, really extremely bad things that we can find and at least mitigate? You know, our getting them in, because once they're in the system and the water and air, I mean, you know, they're in soil then, and it's just impossible to get them out. So the thing is just basically that not, not buy them, not produce them, but that's going to be a, it's not a small lift. No.
None of this is.
Yeah, that's, yes. Yeah, that's, yes, that's right, but what's the choice, right?
Yep.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you both for stepping into leadership positions on the, on the team too.
So, notice of interest letter.
Into the microphone. Sorry, you need, really need to talk into the microphone. Yeah, sorry.
The notice of, the notice of interest letter that Amelia mentioned will be on your consent agenda next week. That deadline is, I think, December 15th. So we'll get that filed.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for presenting today too. Any upcoming agenda items? Okay, now it's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or raise your hand in the audience. Saying no one will close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Heddins?
Um, you know, in the interest of time, I think I might just say I'm pretty booked this week in, in meetings.
Ditto.
Ditto. Yeah. Yeah, busy, busy week. All right, with that, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Heddins.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.